Hi, good morning and, excuse me, good afternoon and welcome to the special Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 24th, 2020. We have a brief but very important conversation for commissioners to have this afternoon. So Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you, Kate. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, commissioners and staff for being available again on this Tuesday afternoon. With that, I will call the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order on today, Tuesday, November 24th at 1:30. We have a few CARES items we need to handle as we get down to the end of the year for deadlines to distribute and take care of CARES funding in the community. Okay, with that, I'll hand over to Tom.
You want to call an item, Madam Clerk?
Oh, sorry. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present, I think. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item A, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Solz, County Manager. We have two speakers today for the CARES discussion. It's our usual speakers, Brent Shelton and Lindsey Pogusso. Brent will talk about first, the CARES Act external funding programs. He will ask for a vote on some approvals for expenditures, and he will go through that. And he will also have one receive and file portion regarding safe operating grants and any question on PPE kit distribution or workforce development. Lindsey has a number of items that she will talk about for approval that will need a vote. It's the commission's discretion whether they want to hear, it looks like six items, if you want to hear them all and vote en masse, or if you want to handle them one item at a time. Chairman, I leave that to your discretion. She also has her usual update on spending status, which will be receive and file. So with that, we'll start with Brent.
Okay. Good afternoon, Brent.
Good afternoon, Chairman Meitzner, commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. And as the manager mentioned, we'll be talking about those external funding opportunities that you've made available through these CARES funds. So the first one will require a vote, and that will be an update on our public health and social service programs that are going through our financial stimulus review team. You received an email yesterday, but I'll briefly summarize the award recommendations that that committee has for you. First of all, they've met twice since the last time you voted, and on the first of those two meetings, they approved an award recommendation of approximately $25,000 to the Quavera Council, the Boy Scouts of America, for some technology and some support for a food service program that you guys did award them funding for earlier. On their meeting yesterday morning, they have listened to six different requests and have four recommendations for approval for you this afternoon. So the first one is with Hunter Health Clinic. Hunter Health Clinic requested $114,053. The committee did recommend approval of that. It's for some facility changes, freezer for storing vaccines, some different expenditures within that clinic to help them with their social distancing and their meeting the COVID pandemic. Since that approval occurred, we did hear from Hunter Health Clinic, and because of the lack of time between now and the end of the year, they withdrawn part of that request. So instead of it being $114,053, the request now is for $64,053. They had a $50,000 facility improvement, and they just can't get it done between now and December 30th. They can't be up and running. The Grace Med Clinic requested, and they're being recommended, for $68,570. That's for test kits, PPE, disinfectant cleaning, and additionally, some overtime pay for triage nurses that they have been dealing with COVID patients. Health Core Clinic has requested, and they're being recommended, for $1,857,465 for a number of similar items, COVID-related personnel expenditures, some lab testing equipment, and things that they are doing in addition to additional food that they have seen a need for in their community pantry. And finally, Children First CEO of Kansas is making a request of $213,991. The committee has recommended $145,771 to them to support their rental assistance and food assistance programs, and additionally, purchasing some equipment to help meet those needs, some mental health support, and disinfectant supplies. A couple of things about the request. Those that have an equipment purchase or some type of a facility change, the committee put a stipulation in that that work be completed by December 20th, which would give us time for that program to be up and running and CARES-eligible by December 30th. So they did put that stipulation in there. They have to have the equipment purchased, the facilities changed by December 20th, so it is in operation by December 30th. And that would apply to Hunter Health Core and Children First CEO because they all had some component of their request that was like that. It's not going to really apply to Hunter Health now because they withdrawn that part of their request. So with that, unless you have questions, I would seek a motion to approve the additional award recommendations of the financial stimulus review team of $2,160,865.56. That'll bring the total award to $19,297,819.29.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I see the Raise My Head Foundation asked for $116,652, and I see that you guys are asking for some additional information around the connection to the pandemic. Was there a question about the entire amount as to whether it was questioned, or was there any portion of that that was pandemic-related that you're sure of and could award any amount?
There are a couple of pieces of their request. One is that they have a cottage industry where they employ women that are trying to get back into sustainable lifestyles, and that, we're trying to find a COVID connection to that. It was closed for a while and being reopened, and I think they have pivoted some of the product that they were creating. They went from lotions to hand sanitizers. So we're just trying to get a handle on the amount of the request that would be COVID-related. So they haven't been declined. They're still in the mix. It's just we've got to kind of true up the numbers because the request kind of changed at the last minute or the explanation, so we've asked them to just revise the numbers if possible. So I would expect that there, it's likely that after the committee meets next Monday, that we'll be coming back to you with some additional funding requests for them.
Okay. How many more committee meetings do you have scheduled?
We have one more scheduled next Monday, November 30th.
And that's it?
That's it. Because as you'll see, we have exceeded the $18 million allocation.
Okay, so what about for the safe operating grants? Are we finished?
And that is the next portion of this, but that portal closes on November 30th as well.
Thank you, Brent.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for this CARES money as proposed. Motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next up, Brent, still you.
Yeah. So the next will be an update on the other three programs for external funding of CARES dollars, just to give you some updates on those. As Commissioner Cruz mentioned, the safe operating grants, that portal closes next Monday at midnight. It closes November 30th, 2020. So anybody that's sitting on the fence and thinking about applying, I would urge them to get their application in by that time. In terms of the amount of money that has been paid out, we have processed checks totaling That's being sent out to 809 applicants in our safe operating grant program. Through the end of business yesterday, we had also received, and these 809 are a subset of this, but we had received 1,728 applications in that portal. Now remember that we get duplicate applications. So someone may put in an application and then hit it twice to make sure we received it, and that counts as two. So as we pull those duplicates out, and there have been over 300 of them to this point, that 1,728 would exceed our budget, but we're not there yet. So there's still some funds available in that program, and I would encourage people to take advantage of that. $3 million was allocated for PPE kits, and we have distributed about 9,200 of those. There are just under 800 kits left. We're developing a plan to push those out into the community between now and the end of the year. And once that's done, because we were able to have people reserve kits through an online portal, we're going to be able to provide you with some information by zip code, by business type, the numbers of kits that went to different areas and different types of businesses throughout the county. We can give you a size of business if it was under five or over 50 employees. So once we've distributed the kits, compiled that information, it's sort of a summation of that program, we'll bring that information to you. And then finally, our workforce development program. We've begun to receive some reimbursement requests in those programs. I will tell you anecdotally that I have heard from one of our applicants there that receive money, they can specifically point to jobs that have been retained and jobs that have been created as a result of some of the training that your allocation of CARES dollars has gone toward in these programs. As they provide their final reports to us in December, we'll compile that information and let you know again the impact of those programs. But I'm hearing positive things from the workforce development grantees, kit recipients, people that are receiving the safe operating grants. So the programs are being well-received, and we're just kind of pushing, sprinting to the finish line at this point. So with that, I would stand for questions and request that you receive and file.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So the 1,728, going back to the safe operating grants, how are we going to know, when are we going to know since it closes November 30th, how many are still available? Because right now, it seems like there aren't any.
Well, if we took our 300 or so duplicates that we know about out of that number, that puts us in the 1,300 to 1,400 range, which would leave us...
Is that a for-sure number of duplicates?
Yeah, we know those have been identified.
Okay.
And there'd probably be some additionals in there. So I would say there's still probably somewhere between 100-plus grants available.
Okay. So reminder, those are $5,000 safe operating business grants. Closes November 30th at what time?
Midnight.
Midnight. Okay. So one week, really, less than a week.
That's right.
To get those in. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. A motion to receive and file I'll make.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next up, Lindsey. And before you speak, Lindsey, just like we recognize when there's an elected public official in the audience, and I see that Mayor Whipple has joined us, so welcome to the meeting. Lindsey.
I'm trying not to break your technology here.
Lindsey, I was made aware, so you're going to have one, two, three, four, five, six items that need a vote to approve spending.
I think actually we'll have five. The sixth one is just a notification.
Okay. Is it your preference that we take these individually for a vote? Or do you...
I honestly have no preference. I think if you all have had an opportunity to review and you're comfortable with bundling, I think that's far more efficient. But if you'd like to go through them individually, I'm here at your pleasure.
Okay, why don't we work our way through them? We'll see them all, and if we end up having some questions on one or two that might make it delayed for a separate vote, okay?
Perfect. We'll be flexible.
Thank you, Lindsey. Appreciate it. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. So Lindsey Pogusso, your CFO, we do have a number of funding asks. We are 25 business days away from the end of CARES, and if that doesn't strike fear into your heart, I assure you, it strikes plenty into mine. So we have a number of asks, and we'll probably have a number of asks as we go through these final weeks, just to make sure we can get these authorized. So the first one for your consideration today, basically are vaccine freezers for the health department. The total cost comes to $76,282. That gets us four ultra-low chest freezers, one large ultra-low freezer, one large refrigerator, and one large vaccine or lab-style freezer. That has actually already been purchased out of the general fund because we had some timing delays. We have since gotten a recommendation from Wood O'Briens that we approve that as a CARES funding source. So if you approve this, then we will move that expense out of the general fund and into CARES. So any questions on that? Or I can move to the next item? Okay. So the next item then is for EMS. They have requested 40 glidescope video laryngoscopes and accessories. Apparently, that helps with intubation. Please don't ask me to go into any more detail. I will send you the 40-page memo if you need those.
That's okay. I've never heard of a glidescope, but I'm not a medical person, so...
Me neither. As we've talked about before, I'm learning all kinds of new things through COVID-19. But this does increase first-attempt success rates and minimizes time requirements. So obviously, this is a pretty critical tool to have related to COVID-19 patients. The next item is physiocontrol life packs for the City of Derby's Fire Department. And so if you recall, earlier this year, the commission authorized 40 of these life packs for the system. Unfortunately, in that, we overlooked the City of Derby, and so this would make sure they have comparable equipment as to what the rest of the EMS system has. Then moving to EMS Galagio, I assume that's a clever take on Galileo. It is system-location software, and so it will integrate with our system using our GIS data, and it adds some additional layers in to give some better specificity to allow EMS and fire and other first responders to get to patients more quickly. And so that actually integrates with county commission districts and some other data. So it will allow us to report some pretty interesting information even after CARES and COVID is over. Next, of course, is a hot item, and that is the WSU molecular diagnostic lab reimbursement. As you know, there have been some pretty aggressive talks going on in the last couple of weeks to try and get to pay out the $4 million. Even as recently as this morning, I know WSU finance staff and our consultants were getting together to try and pin down or refine some data. So we are prepared today to ask you to reimburse $1,504,559.14 for reimbursement to WSU for costs that have been both deemed eligible and have been fully reconciled back to every source document that's necessary. So we're excited about that progress. The contract does say that they have through December 10th to continue to make payments on these items, and so it is realistic to think that we could continue to have this discussion for a few more weeks, depending on when that proof of payment occurs. And then those are the items I would ask you to vote to approve. The final item is more just a notification, a technical item. Wood O'Briens has given us a memo now on the use of our external agencies. Of course, we always expected the use of those external agencies for lab testing. Sorry, it's helpful if I tell you that. But for that lab testing is eligible and costs reasonable. And so at the time that request was made, it was estimated at 1.2 million. Of course, we have exceeded that amount. We're closer to 8 million now collectively between all of the testing that we have paid to date, although we expect continued invoices. As we transition to WSU, we, of course, will need to refine how that's paid. My understanding is that if they're referred by the county health department, then the county will pay for those. Everything else would be paid for by State Spark. So we'll continue to have discussions about these testing costs as we go. So that is some quick information for you. Is there anything I can answer? If not, and you're comfortable, I would recommend you approve all five items.
Okay. Thank you for these requests and spelling it out. Thank you, Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Cruz for working with the Wichita State Testing Lab. Appreciate your cooperation on that and your assistance. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve items, the five items you described, and receive and file the notification about the testing that you talked about.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay. Being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so still me for one last item, and that is the spending status update. And we'll move through this quickly because most of these things you've already heard about and approved, they're now showing up in our financial system. So in terms of total COVID spending, and again, this is all funding sources, we are at $43,517,881. And that's up quite a bit from last week, or two weeks ago when we spoke, most significantly in CARES. We have not seen any cost increases in any of those other COVID funding sources. So within CARES, of the county's direct allocation, we are at $38,174,759. Of that, 28 million, just over 28 million, is to support direct county needs. And so the bulk of that are, again, for items that you have already discussed and approved, including the bipolar ionization throughout county facilities at about $824,000, about $114,000 for the mobile ordering system at the arena, about $275,000 for the two new health electronic medical record systems, about $87,000 for 75 laptops and monitors for those additional health department staff that you all had authorized, along with a few additional laptops for some that had not been received. We have spent another $132,000 on cleaning services, including $65,000 in the jail, and we are definitely seeing an uptick because of the protocols we have here in place at the county. When an employee or a member of the public is in a facility that's been exposed, we go in and do some sterilization, and so those costs are definitely on the uptick, which is what we expect from what's happening in the community. We have spent another $52,000 on PPE for things like gloves and face masks. And then finally, the health department has spent $57,000 for testing supplies for their drive-through clinic. So then shifting to the county's direct allocation that is supporting our external entities like schools, cities, and those stimulus review team recommendations, we remain at a full $5 million that has been allocated to schools. All 13 of those schools have received their full allocations. We're still at about 5.1 million to cities based on the 50% that has been paid out from their first round of allocations. They are continuing to submit reimbursement requests, and we'll start bringing those to you for authorization to make those payments. And then we have paid out $17,400 to vendors on behalf of the African-American Council of Elders. If you recall, we are acting as the paying agent for them, and so those invoices come directly to us, and we make those payments. So that leaves us then, in terms of the county's direct allocation of CARES, at $61,462,158 remaining. But again, we have every dollar accounted for in the spending plan and 25 business days to get it done, and I assure you, it keeps me up at night, but we're going to get there. So then shifting to State Spark, we are up to $6.9 million of that total 9.6 million that we were awarded again due to our high unemployment earlier this year. As Brent said, we're up to about 3.9 million for safe operating grant payouts. We, of course, spent the full $3 million on the PPE kits, and we don't have any payments yet on those workforce development grants, but as Brent alluded to, those reports will start coming in, and we'll start reimbursing for those. So then moving to the final couple parts of this discussion, elections. So the CARES HAVA funds that the Secretary of State awarded was just at $420,000. My understanding from the election commissioner is that those reimbursements have actually been submitted, and a check is in process. Those total to $417,676. That includes costs for temporary positions, about $138,000 for paper ballots, envelopes, and postage, another $56,000 for election overages or postage overages over the budget, $63,000 for pull-print tablets, printers, and accessories, along with $18,000 for software for those tablets, and about $4,600 for secure cabinets to store those in, another $20,000 for SNE shields, and $30,000 for ballot drop boxes. And finally, $15,000 for a digital color printer and accessories. So all of those have been submitted, and my understanding is that they have been accepted by the Secretary of State. So we'll keep you posted on those developments, and I know Tabitha still plans to brief the commissioners on the election next month. Finally, though not CARES, we do have the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant that was awarded due to COVID-19 stressors on the system of about $816,000. Of course, payroll is still being processed, and so we are at $593,687 of that allocation, mostly for machines and bar scanners. And there's not really much of a change from the last time we spoke in terms of what expenses have been charged there, but we'll continue to keep you updated on that. The final thing I would share, although I guess this is a receive and file, is that I am very grateful for the review team, and they actually will be here next Wednesday, the full team, to talk with you all and hopefully get some recognition from you for their hard work, including Brent, who has served as our chair. So with that, commissioners, I'm happy to stand for questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file the spending update.
Okay, Lindsey, thank you for the presentation, the update on both our CARES and the Spark money status. Believe it or not, we're working through this year. We're going to get to the end of it.
You're so open. Can't come fast enough.
I would agree. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to receive and file the report that you just gave us.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Next up, Tom. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Government Enforcement Services Agreement for Sedgwick County Health Officer Orders with the City of Wichita.
Justin, welcome. Welcome to the commission.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, here to present an agreement, proposed agreement with the City of Wichita. It's in your backup materials. It's titled "A Government Enforcement Services Agreement." And I guess, first off, I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Kirk Sponsel, who's an assistant county counselor, a fellow assistant county counselor in our office who actually drafted this agreement. Just to explain the background on this agreement, back on November 10th, you approved a resolution that makes failure to comply with a local health officer order a violation of the county code. That was Resolution Number 154-2020. Due to the limitations that exist under state law, that resolution can't be enforced within city limits without that city's governing body agreeing to allow the county to enforce it within their city limits. This agreement would allow that to occur. I'll go into a little bit more detail. But the draft agreement that you see in front of you was approved by the city council on November 19th. It would grant the county jurisdiction to prosecute the particular resolution that I mentioned within the city limits of Wichita. The city also adopted County Resolution Number 154-2020 within its city limits, which is one of the conditions precedent to the agreement being effective and the county having jurisdiction, so that has occurred. And city staff, as part of this, would be aiding in the reporting, investigating, and testifying with regard to any noncompliance with local health officer orders. The agreement would also, it clarifies that the prosecution of any violations would occur within the county court, which is the court that typically handles code violations, violations of county codes that occur. And this agreement draft is quite similar in scope to several agreements the county's reached with various cities around the county for code inspection and enforcement services. It's a similar template to what we've used in dozens of other cases. You may approve the agreement today with a simple majority vote. The recommended action is to approve the agreement, authorize it to the chairman to sign. As the chairman noted, Mayor Whipple is... As the chairman noted, Mayor Whipple is here. I don't know if he wished to make any remarks or not, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Justin, for all the work on this. And I'm not sure, Mayor Whipple, courtesy, do you want to say anything?
Sorry, I think my leg's asleep. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I don't want to pass up an opportunity to thank the county commission for considering this agreement and working side by side with the city to put the best interests of our community forward. So just thank you, and I look forward to collaborating with you all as this moves forward and hopefully as we march out of this crisis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there any questions? I don't see any so far. I'm happy to make a motion to approve this enforcement services agreement.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to approve the agreement as in front of us. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And cares, thank you, Justin. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Resolution Delegating Authority for Entering Into Government Enforcement Services Agreements With Cities to Enforce Orders of the Local Health Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners, or afternoon, sorry. It's afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Karen. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. This item deals, is very similar to the item that you had before you just a minute ago. It's entirely possible that the 19 other cities in the Sedgwick County area might want to enter into agreements with the county for these services. If they do, that process would involve two governmental bodies having to go through the agenda process. If, and that can be time-consuming. The pandemic has required us to become very nimble and flexible in our timeframes. And so the resolution that's before you now would allow the delegation of authority to sign those agreements to be made to the chairman or the county manager. That would save some time and allow the county to be more flexible in the time that would take to honor the city's wishes if they wish to have the county enforce within their jurisdictions. The, if the resolution have adopted, it would, the agreements would have to be in substantial compliance with the attachment to the resolution. It's a, it's attached as Exhibit A, and it's basically the same thing that you just approved for the City of Wichita, but it's a template. And whoever signs those agreements would need to know that that, any future agreements would have to be in substantial compliance with that document. And then when the chair or the manager exercises the authority granted by the resolution, he or she would have to advise the other members of the BLCC of the exercise of that authority, contemporary in essence, to taking that action. This is, this is not unlike many times this county commission has delegated authority. There are some situations in which the BLCC has delegated authority to the park superintendent with the manager's oversight to sign for uses at the parks, agreements that would provide for those. You may recall, it seems like forever ago, but in March this year, you enacted an emergency declaration resolution that allowed the county manager to waive the provisions of certain county policies in light of the pandemic and the requirement to act quickly for those situations that might come up without having to convene the BLCC for consideration. Also, the Charter Resolution 68, which deals with purchases and contracting, it delegates authority for signing certain agreements. I'll just quickly summarize the delegations there. Purchases that are less than 10,000 can be signed, the contract can be signed by the county managers. Purchases between 10,000 and $24,999.99 can be signed by the purchasing director. Purchases between 25,000 and 49,000, almost 50,000, the purchasing director can sign, but the manager can direct to BLCC. And purchases for 50,000 and up, the BLCC has to approve the contract. So that, that is a, that is a significant delegation of authority there, but the, the action is authorized by statute and a simple majority is required. And I would ask that, I would recommend you approve the resolution, and I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Karen, for the presentation. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions. This agreement right now doesn't have anything to do with Sedgwick County and our agreement with Wichita right now. This is for other cities?
Not, not directly. Right. If other cities wanted to do the same thing that the City of Wichita just did, it would be more efficient at the timeframe.
So it just really kind of speeds up the process and makes it more efficient, so it doesn't have to go before the full board? I probably missed an opportunity on the last item. We didn't really get into the mechanics of that, but I just think for the public's knowledge, I would like someone to maybe describe the process, what a violation in Sedgwick County consists of, and how does it work that someone would report that, and how is it investigated? Would someone be willing to describe that process briefly?
It's not really material to this item, but I think there's a plan for that to happen. Is there not, is there a plan for that to happen soon? Yes.
Are we going to cover that in an agenda item, or is that, we can just make it part of this? That's fine. We can make it part of this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to, I'm glad to agree to this. This is not a problem, but I just think that we kind of skipped over that last item, and I just think it's relevant to discussion, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding exactly what that enforcement piece does and how it works. And I think I've struggled the last week to actually get the details crisp in my own mind, and I even, even as I sit right now, I think I still have a couple, I still have a couple of questions about some details exactly how it works. And so I just think at some point, I know that there's a plan to do this after this BLCC meeting to go into this with more detail, but I, that's going to be a separate recording and possibly a different audience. And so I just think it's, if we could just briefly talk about that at some point, if not now, then at some point before we adjourn this meeting, that would be fine with me.
I would agree that now is just fine, because we're talking about an agreement between us and the remaining, a template agreement, and so this would help explain that flowchart and process.
Kate is handing out kind of a flowchart that we're going to give the media later, and actually we can give it to them now. And we will be doing a Q and A session. Chairman and the mayor will be part of a Q and A session with the media after our formal meeting is over. But to answer your question, Commissioner Howell, Tom Stoles, County Manager, by the way. The process is outlined in five steps here, and there's some information to talk about in between the steps that I'd like to maybe take some time and cover. We have created a site on the MABCD, that's Metropolitan Area Building and Construction website, which allows citizens or officials to go on to that website and enter into, enter information and to initiate a complaint. We picked that site because MABCD is the code compliance for both the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, so it made sense to house it there. So as citizens live their lives and they see, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Cruz.
Tom, because, because this is such a, because we need to be as clear as possible, I would really like to have that site pulled up right now so that we can see it while he's talking about it. I think it's important to know what the website is, how to get to it. Let's talk about that as step one of this process. Okay, so maybe we're not ready for that, but that's important.
We'll get it up. Can we keep going, Kate? Do you want to come back to it?
No, keep going.
All right. Commissioner will bring that up. It is important. You're right, we need to show the site, and we have demonstration ready for that. It is not up and running, though it is not live today until the commission authorizes it to be so. So the citizen, as they're living their life, will have the ability to enter a complaint through this website. And let me, let me back up a little bit. We met on Friday, last Friday, the day after the City of Wichita agreed to become part of this arrangement. We had a lengthy meeting involving all staff that has any touch point in this process and worked through the logistics of it ourselves. And through that discussion, I think the intention of this website, of this process, is to focus on businesses or public areas where people gather that are not complying with the health order. It is not designed to call if somebody's not wearing a mask in a location. It is designed to tap into if there's hundreds of people not wearing a mask in a location, because the mission and objective of this enforcement is to stop superspread of the virus. So we had a robust meeting with city staff on Friday and kind of came to this, came to this conclusion, including where it was going to be housed on, on the internet and how people could apply. So citizens will enter into, enter information, and it's, we'll bring it up in a second, but it's fairly self-explanatory, who, what, where, when, why, of what the complaint is. And when that sends, it goes to three different entities. It goes to the Health Department, it goes to County Legal, and it goes to MABCD. And then we get into the second step of this.
Which, explain MABCD for everybody who doesn't know who that is.
It's Metropolitan Area Building and Construction. It is the code enforcement arm of city and county, which is why we picked it. So they get a copy, the Health Department gets a copy, and County Legal gets a copy all at the same time. County Legal and the Health Director will look at each complaint and determine whether it is something that we want to fall up on, if it's valid, if it's serious, if it jeopardizes public health. And then they will move that forward, and that can go in one of two ways. And the municipalities, and it's going to be more than the City of Wichita, there are other cities who will, are taking it to their elected bodies this week. But the municipality then receives communication from the county about a location or a site that has noncompliance issues. And the city then can, we work together, city and county, and we determine what do we do with that business? And it can either be as simple as a letter from the Health Director going to that business, essentially warning them that we have received complaint about a violation of the health order. If there is evidence or information that is good enough for the county attorney to basically push it to county court, in other words, if there's enough information there for probable cause, then the city could opt to then take that to county court. So the letter being sent is a warning, pushing it ahead, let's talk about that step for just a second. Then the county counselor's office would generate a complaint, and MABCD, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Code Officer, would go and serve that complaint on the business, and they would be given a date for county court, and we'd begin the prosecution of that matter. If a warning is given, the city will be notified that a warning letter has been sent, and any subsequent violation would be handled the same way. So if we get a second violation on a business, then it would be, we would want to go to enforcement mode. In other words, if there's evidence enough there for the county counselor's office, we could prosecute that case. That's why we say on the violations that would need prosecution, that information has to come from an official, or a citizen has to send us the kind of information which rises to an evidentiary level that we could successfully prosecute a case. Police officers and sheriff's deputies and fire officials and EMS officials, they're used to documentation and sending reports. So ideally, that report would come to Health and County Legal through law enforcement, through fire, through a official in a government, and then we would then, could push that to county court. So that's kind of the logistics of how this works. So on the second box here, it says, businesses will receive notification, that could be a letter, it could be a summons. Officials will investigate the business for compliance, and this happens very early on. County Counselor's Office is basically the gatekeeper on whether these things prosecute or do not prosecute. And if it does, then they go to county court, and if not, they do not. So it's an overall breakdown of how this works, and I'd be glad to answer questions, and maybe Mr. Papoon or Justin would want to chime in as well, but that's kind of how we see this working.
Got a couple of questions, Tom. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So let's talk about public spaces where people gather. Can you please describe what you're, what you mean by that? And please describe that.
Sure. It's any, it's any space within the county where a citizen may walk in as part of a public process. And that can be a business, it can be, it can be a bingo parlor, it could be anywhere where public can gather. Could be, could be a park, could be a wedding reception, could be any of those above. What it does not mean is people's homes. Though we care about what people, what goes on in people's home, we don't want people gathering, we also know that this cannot enforce that. So it does not talk about people's homes, it does not talk about churches and people that are, and the exemptions in the order that already exist. It's space in the public where people can gather to do business, or have fun, or do anything that we normally do, that kind of situation.
Okay. So the other question I have, and I guess this is a good time to bring up the order that was just signed by Dr. Menz. The additional, so when you walk into Walmart at 53rd in Valley Center, they have someone counting people in and counting people out. Is that part of this new order for, is it up to public spaces where people gather? Because I'm talking about any business, not just bars and restaurants, any public space where people gather. What is their responsibility to maintain and know how many people are in their establishment?
I might have Justin come, since you brought the new order up, which was literally signed by Dr. Menz shortly before our meeting. There is a component in there that puts some responsibility on places that have the public come in to either conduct business or do work. And there is some language in the new order that talks about just exactly what that Walmart is doing. They have signs, they actually monitor their, their capacity, and the new order doesn't really necessarily change capacities, it's still at 50%. But the complaint has been from citizens, hey, I'm complying, or businesses, I'm complying, and a person right down the street is packed, what are we going to do about that? So it, it puts the onus on business to manage that to some degree, and Justin, do you want to maybe talk about that a bit? And maybe while you're at the podium, could Justin talk about other issues within the order? Okay.
Once again, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Cruz, to your question, the order does have language that would place some responsibilities in a number of contexts, but certainly the one you're talking about as well. In particular, I'd refer to page eight, it would be Section 34D, which says that all the businesses and organizations shall undertake reasonable efforts to ensure that their facilities remain in compliance with the applicable percent of fire code capacity limitations established within this order. You know, I think in practice, how that can work is, if you're a business, you need to know what your fire code capacity is, and that's the starting point. And it's not good enough to, you know, let's say you're subject to a 50, a retail establishment that's subject to a 50% capacity limitation. As Tom was talking about, if you have blatant noncompliance where that place was 90% of its capacity, clearly they have a duty to know what their capacity is under the fire code, and then how that's affected by this order, but then also to ensure that they stay in compliance with it. And so the order doesn't say they have to do the count, but that may be very, that may be the most reasonable way to do that. Maybe it becomes reasonable once the business starts to approach their capacity, that they start looking at those issues more. It really depends on the circumstances, but if you're, I don't think a business can just say, we don't know what our fire code capacity is and just not do anything. And I also think a business would not be able to, you know, just claim, you know, in other words, ignorance of the fire code capacity would not be a defense for a business. Failure to take efforts to ensure they stay within whatever that capacity would not be a defense for a business. They would need to both know the capacity and try to take measures to ensure they stay within it.
Can I, can I add something also to make sure for the public? Your same section four on page seven, four dot A, it starts out saying, "Retail stores do not fit within the definition of mass gatherings. They fall into this 50% capacity." So I think it's important that the public understand the mass gathering number is at the 25, but that is not retail stores, and then goes on for fitness centers and restaurants as well.
And that's a very good point, Chairman. I may elaborate some, just a little bit, to explain the local health officer, Dr. Menz, I think reasoning and thought process on that is that, as I understand it, and I'll try to opine as best I can, is that when you're in a, Commissioner Cruz mentioned the Walmart situation, when you're in that situation, you're in a transient population, you're not standing by somebody a couple feet away from them, or four or five feet away from them for half an hour, an hour, you are moving about, getting your item. away from them for half an hour, an hour, you are moving about, getting your items. And so, it is, there's, to a degree, a lessened risk. However, you know, the, the 50% capacity is in there to ensure that they're, you know, whether it's holiday shopping, whether it's just lots of people going to the grocery store at the same time, it's just so you don't get too many people close together, because then it can become more of a risk, you get lot, people in line for periods of time. So, I think that's a good point to make, Chairman.
Do you have any questions, more questions at this time?
No, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Hal?
Thanks for letting me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lost part of my train of thought there, but the, the graphic that you have up there also covers organizations. Is that, you said it does not include churches, however?
Specifically in terms of code, the, let me back up. The, the order could apply to a church, but there are parts of it that do not apply to a church. I guess specifically, the mass gatherings and social distancing provisions in the order do not apply to religious institutions. So, they would be exempted from that.
The masking requirements of a church wasn't doing that, would that be subject potentially to this?
Churches would be required to, to follow the masking requirements, the same as other businesses and organizations.
Okay. I know that the resolution, the resolution we passed on enforcement last week also mentioned individuals, but I think that explanation we had just a moment ago, it kind of, it kind of discusses it towards businesses, and on the graphic, it says events, and you also just now clarified organizations, at least, in, in, with respect to churches, at least part of the order would be subject to this. But with, with respect to individuals, it's not really suited towards that. Now, I have maybe scenarios, everyone's probably been to a convenience store, and seen a number of people inside there that are not wearing masks, I'm sure we've all seen that. Some places are better than others, but they say a convenience store maybe is not the best place to see compliance with the mask order, for example. The individuals that are there, it's, it's unlikely that this would go after them, but it potentially would go after the business itself, if there's, if there's a willingness on the part of the business to not enforce this health order. Would that be reasonable to say that? In other words, if, if the business itself did not seem to attempt to create compliance within their store in terms of number of people, and social distancing, and masks, that that business could be subject to this as well. Some, even though, even though the individuals in that business are the, are the issue, the business could be, could be subject to this process.
I think it could. I would, I would point out that I think if the business would, and the word reasonable efforts is used at least in one or two places, if, if the business would put in place some procedures and, and ways to try to limit non-compliance amongst their patrons, I think that would be important for county staff in administering this. That's just the way I've understood this, manager's direction. Certainly, I think as staff, we would all look to the county commission's direction if there's anything on that. But I think you're right in terms of how the order is. The order, or the, let me back up, the resolution itself that you passed on November 10th doesn't specify individuals, businesses, it just says non-compliance. But that's also, it's worth keeping in mind, that order, or that resolution is saying any violation of a local health officer. There can be other local health officer orders, non-specific to COVID-19, months or years down the line, that could apply to individuals. So, it's not saying you can't do that, but I think what Tom's announced, County Manager Tom Stoltz has announced, is an intention to administer this to where it would apply to businesses and organizations, and not individuals. And there's some reasons behind that. I mean, I'd, I'd point out on the mask wearing, for example, while there's an expectation that individuals wear masks, there are several exceptions there that would be hard to prosecute for our office to prosecute those in court. And Tom mentioned the, kind of the public health benefit that you get, as long as you're trying to get the businesses to ensure as broad of compliance as possible. And so, I think there, there are a few reasons that it's proposed to be administered that way, but we would certainly look to the commission if you guys would like to give us any guidance on that as well.
Well, some places are probably easier to, to monitor that than others. Again, I, I think about typical home, home improvement store, probably has two or three entrances, and they could probably, you know, the size of the store, everyone, everyone funnels to one of those three entrances, and people are in there quite, quite a long time. But for a convenience store, for example, there's also three entrances, and people come and go very quickly. And I'm trying to think, you know, they usually have a couple of employees that may be at the most, and so, we're talking about having to monitor potentially several entrances would be, would be more challenging, and, and I guess the evidence, you'd have to, I assume the evidence would be something, for example, if there was photographic evidence or video evidence, that you receive quite a bit of that, that would be, that would be compelling, I guess, to, to send out the letter and potentially prosecute them to county court. Does that sound, I mean, I, I actually, individuals doing this, individuals will be turning that in, and photographic evidence or video evidence, would that be something that would be enough, would that be compelling enough for that to go forward?
I'll do my best to answer that question, Commissioner Hal, and I may not be the, the person who's, who's making those determinations, but I think it would be a case-by-case basis, you know, and, and whether it's a violation here, or violations of other county code, I mean, our office in administering county court is, is used to receiving various types of evidence and information, determining whether we could make a case beyond a reasonable doubt in court or not, you know, whether the credibility of that evidence, whether it's sufficiently detailed to hold up to scrutiny and a legal challenge. So, I think that, I realize that's not a direct answer in terms of yes, no, because really, on these matters, when we would get something, it would be case-by-case. I, I think that the bulk of this, from what I understand, Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, probably would be items that would come from officials of the various, you know, city or county officials, as Tom had mentioned, who might be completing reports, submitting evidence, but that's not to say it's the only evidence our office would consider.
I have basically two really small questions, I think. You, in, in your description, you said something about the city can make a decision on whether they wanted to go forward or not. Can you please describe that? What do you mean by that?
I might defer some to Tom on that.
I think this is an example where the municipality and the county are in partnership, and we see the city being the, the county is the overarching health order distributor, but the city kind of has input on how they want this enforced in their jurisdiction. So, to me, we have to have communication with the city on how they want to proceed with handling a matter. So, if it's a business or a gathering, I think it's just courteous to inform the city that that has happened, advise the city that we do or do not have enough evidence, and ask the city's opinion, what, whether we should move through with a warning letter, or whether we should go through with prosecution. I just think that that's a teamwork kind of thing we'll work through on this.
I have one, one more question, I'll make one minor comment, and that is, so, if someone went through with this entire process, you show a five-step process, they got to cut to the end of that, and they were summoned to county court, stood in front of a county judge, the, the penalty would be a $500 fine, potentially, but the judge, again, if they found, if we're found guilty of a violation, the range is 250 to 500, and this judge, that's the judge's discretion, if I understand correctly. Can you please describe that?
That's correct, Commissioner Hal.
So, it's not a $5 fine? The reason I bring this up is because I've heard a number of people have the impression that there's someone walking around with a book of tickets, and they're handing out tickets to people for $5. That's not what this is. This is about a very, in my opinion, a kind of a clunky process, that if you follow it to the end, it might result in a $500 fine, but it could be as low as 250. But that's, that's the range that the judge would have, or he could dismiss the violation, I assume, and it would be nothing.
That's correct. And, and our office would always have the opportunity to dismiss, I mean, we always have prosecutorial discretion, ability to dismiss, and not proceed with prosecution.
I heard someone in one of the city council meetings last night commented that there's 30 days with the jail, potentially for an individual not wearing a mask. That's the type of thing that we need to be very crisp, very clear, it's not what this is.
That's correct, Commissioner Hal.
There's no jail attached to this. Worst case is if you went and did everything wrong, and then up in front of a county judge, it could be a $500 fine.
And I, I'd be happy to, to supplement a little bit what you said there. The offense here would not include any potential jail time as part of the sentence on that. County court offenses cannot result in jail time as part of the sentence. What I think you may have heard was, if cities, there's very, I think, I want to say the City of Derby, I think, has an ordinance that already, already on the books that makes a violation of a local health officer or a Class C misdemeanor, if they have that in place, that can be, the maximum sentence can be a 500, up to a $500 fine, and up to 30 days in jail. And so, I think some cities around, whether Sedgwick County or the state, have, have considered, the Kansas League of Municipalities has a uniform, UPOC, I forget exactly what it stands for, but essentially their uniform code, and I think that code contemplates a Class C misdemeanor. So, that's probably why some of the cities are talking about 30 days in jail, but this, the resolution that you passed on November 10th would not include any jail time.
And for the record, I think Derby's had that in their, on their books for quite a while now, it's not something they did last week or last month, it's been out there for a while, and I don't believe they've actually written any actual citations, they've not taken at anybody, and they go, with respect to Wichita, they had a mask order, or an incentive to the City of Wichita from July 1st until October 26th, and I think they wrote a total of four individual citations against four individuals over that time period, I think had $25 fines each. And so, I don't think that this is, I mean, one people don't understand, we want them to follow the health order, absolutely, wearing a mask is important, minimizing gatherings is important, but the idea that there's, you know, police officers with ticket books handing out tickets right and left for what they perceive as being violations of the order is not what this is about. This is about, I'd say, a business that is in disregard of the county health order. That's what, that's the primary focus of this, of this today. Is that fair? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for summarizing that, that's well said. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Justin, while you're up there, while we, you know, have been in this meeting, we've been talking about the health order that just was signed, and I know that we've been kind of roundabout talking about it, but I would love for you to just state the changes, and I think that we have, but like, the gathering limits going from a certain point to a certain point. So, can you just point out those highlighted things that, from the order that was November 10th to now, November 24th?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
There's probably only four or five items of note. On the bottom of page four of the order, section one, or I'm sorry, section 2, 1A, the language is clarified some to state that folks have to wear masks or face covering, subject to the number of exemptions later in the order, when they're present within any indoor public space. There used to be language about it, as long as you can maintain six feet of distance from people, so that language would be modified some. Again, this order, I would point out, becomes effective on the 27th of November, is, is when it's proposed to be effective. And so, that would apply, it would also make it more consistent with later on in the order, there was language before about businesses requiring folks to have masks on in the same place, and then same situation, so it makes it internally consistent. Moving on to page seven, section 3.4, we already talked about the mass gatherings would be limited to 25 total individuals, they'd still be subject to social distancing requirements, they'd still have to, you know, wear the masks, subject to the mask requirements, but the main change there would be moving from 100 to 25 as the cap on the mass gatherings.
So, Justin, can you please just talk to us about what exactly that means?
Sure. And I'll, I'll start, Commissioner Cruz, by maybe defining, pointing out how mass gathering is defined in a consolidated way. It means when you're, have a group of people in a specific enclosed, confined, or designated public space, whether indoors or outdoors. And a public space means indoor, outdoor space, or area that's open to the public, does not include private residential properties, as, as Tom Stoltz noted, or private offices or workspaces that are not open to customers or public visitors. And so, those gatherings would be, in this case, you know, limited to 25. If you've got separate rooms, separate buildings, an outdoor space, those are different gatherings, those are not the same gathering, because we're, I think, from a medical perspective, Dr. Menz isn't concerned about COVID-19 spreading, going through a wall. That's the, I think, the rationale behind that. Also, there are exceptions to what is not, and this goes along with what Chairman pointed out earlier, things that are not considered mass gatherings, but still have specific requirements. So, and, and under this order, retail stores are not mass gatherings. The bars and restaurants have very specific provisions that apply to them, how many people you can have at a table, things like that. They're not considered mass gatherings, and also gyms and fitness centers are not considered mass gatherings. And so, moving on from that, I, I suppose we've settled what a mass gathering is. If you are a retail store, you're expected to have a 50% cap in terms of capacity, 50% of fire code is, is what you're limited to. If you are a restaurant, bar, nightclub, or other facility that sells alcohol for on-premises consumption, that's not a mass gathering, but you would be limited to either 100 total patrons in that designated public space, or 50% of the fire code capacity, whichever would be less. The same, really the same requirement in terms of capacity would apply on gyms and health clubs. And those are, that, that language is very similar to the way that Dr. Menz's order from November 10th that you mentioned was worded as well. The, there are a number of exceptions to the mass gatherings requirements, and so, I would point out on page eight, section 3, 5.5, there are more exceptions listed now. That's, part of that's a consequence of moving from a gathering size of 100 down to 25, there's more things that you could unintentionally cause issues with if you start limiting your gathering size. And so, there, there are more exceptions, like airports, bus stations, things like that, that are considered, so that we don't run afoul of them being able to operate. These are, a lot of these were in either prior orders by Dr. Menz this past spring, or the governor's executive order, they're, they're kind of drawn from those, but are, are things that still need to operate at this point, and we wouldn't want to limit them to gatherings of less than 25. I think that pretty well summarizes the changes. I, I guess the other thing I would note is, as, as noted, this would start on the 27th, and it would run through the ninth day of January of 2021, is what's contemplated on the timeframe, whereas I think the prior order went through December 31st. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, too, any additional questions.
But the current order that is in place right now can be enforced?
That's correct.
Okay.
It can be, it would be enforced through the 26th, and start on the 27th, the order that Dr. Menz signed today is what would become effective.
Okay.
But both orders can be enforced, sorry.
This is, this is a lot, this is kind of confusing for our community to handle, so I hope that, does this order go far enough? We come up on our holiday weekend, we have Thanksgiving, we have people that will be gathering, and while it's, it's been advised not to gather, does this order do enough so that we could enjoy a Christmas? Right? I mean, we're having, just the other day, I was at a retail shop, and it was packed. I mean, people did not keep their distance, it, it was packed. So, I just hope this order does enough, because what is the next option? If we find, our doctors were standing right at that podium where you're at, and I believe that one of the doctors suggested going down to five. If we see the numbers increase, like we have been seeing, and we get to that 300 in our hospital system, what does this community expect us to do? I guess. And so, I just am pleading with people to do what you can to slow this spread. I believe that that's what this is for. I have in my inbox, people who are talking about, we're not doing enough, people are talking about, we have done too much, we're trying to find a happy medium that will allow us to keep businesses open, because that's what we all so desperately have to have happen in our community. But we also have to have a fighting chance, not for, not only for those who have COVID, which 30% of the people in our hospital system right now have it, we need to make sure that those people who suffer from a heart attack, from stroke, don't have to wait in the ER. I just hope we're doing enough. I just hope we're doing enough. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other comments at this time. Circling back to your item, Karen, we've kind of added a few items, and I think it's very healthy to have the discussion about the order, and thank you, Tom. I note that this, we can come back to that after we vote on the, the website. Commissioners, I, this, as presented, I'd, I'd comment that I, I'm kind of in agreement, it's a standard agreement that we allow the manager or the chair to sign, and saves us. Now, there's only 19 or 18 other cities in the county that, so I guess we could have 18 separate meetings about an agreement, but I'm, I'm not, I don't have the burning desire to be the, the sole signer, but I do think that it's, that this makes sense. If it's all right with you all, I, I would make a motion that we approve this standard agreement as presented from Karen.
Second.
Okay. It's been a motion, a second, any other comments? Okay, being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, that, thanks Karen for your work. So, Tom, can you, and Kate, can you continue on with the, with the sample of the website?
Sure.
Because we now have approved this, and so, the enforcement side and the website, so, walk us through.
Yeah, Kate had, took the liberty to basically bring up the website, what it looks like, and Kate, can you go ahead and, yeah, let me get to what I can see. And Kate, can you go ahead and, yeah, let me get to what I can see. Go ahead and, yeah. So it is on the, it's on the MABCD site, and is it on the COVID site too?
So it's on our homepage. It's on the SedgwickCounty.org homepage under Public Health Orders. And if we could maybe move that to the top, that might be nice. And then, do you want to come up to the podium and just describe it, Kate? If you don't mind?
Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer. So on our website, we have the portal to report COVID-19 business violations, so businesses who are not in compliance or who appear to not be in compliance. Anyone can go in and submit these reports. So we have a copy of the public health order, so everyone knows what is allowed or not allowed. And we also have frequently asked questions as well for quick reference. All of these reports will be submitted and reviewed by Sedgwick County, so we're asking folks to fill out their contact information, first name, last name, phone number, and email, and then share the details of this incident. So what date it occurred? You can click, you know, today. What time? Fill out the time, you know, 8:00 AM or 8:00 PM. And then what problem or concern brought you to this website, to the portal? So it could be capacity, or businesses operating outside of approved hours. If there's concerns about masks, either employees not wearing masks, or patrons not wearing masks, not attempting to enforce social distancing, or any other, any other item related to the local health order. And then there is a section here to describe the event. We also have a box to name the business where you were, the address and the city. So if it's in Wichita, if it's in Derby, Kechai, wherever, and then the ZIP code, and then you'll click "I'm Not a Robot" and submit. When you submit that, if you fill in your email address, you will get a receipt to your email address saying, "Thank you for submitting this. We are now taking this under review." And if you have any photos or video documentation, to send it to a specified email address as well.
So they'll have to submit it to get a receipt?
Mm-hmm.
To submit a photo?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no way to upload something at the beginning?
No. Our workaround is to submit it via email.
Okay. So they have, so their name and all that stuff up top, is that required information?
I believe it is required, but let me double check on that. That was our conversation, to make it required, so that way if we had questions as staff when we did our investigation, we could go back to this individual. So I believe it is required, but I will double check.
Okay. So how will we handle those folks who do submit, right? They're brave enough. Hopefully, they have a legitimate complaint. We don't want a bunch of people just tattle and tell on each other. If they're not doing something wrong, we hope that people will have a verified complaint. So how is that going to be handled?
Well, Commissioner, if somebody does not put their name and information down, that then becomes an anonymous complaint. And if it would push to county court, that's, it's not prosecutable.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I have a question. Will the, because again, this is driven for noncompliance with the health order at businesses or places like that. So will the, if it's determined that the health department or the county is going to send them a letter with, does that business get the opportunity to see the complaint and who filed and what the extent of the complaint was?
Actually, I think, Justin, would you like to, or Tom?
I'll take a stab at that, and Justin can come in.
Okay.
I think that the, that the business will get a letter basically talking about what the complaint entails. I don't know that we would necessarily put name and address of the complaining party down. If it becomes prosecutable and we have to go to county court, clearly anyone who generates the complaint would have to come testify to what they saw. So Mike or Justin, you want to, is that your opinion or?
Yeah. Have to, have to, or need to, or want to?
I'm sorry, what's that?
See, I was under the assumption that a representative of the municipality or some official would actually be the complaint, would confirm the complaint and be the person that testifies at the hearing?
That clearly is how we have designed this.
Okay.
In a normal circumstance, if a citizen notifies us of a violation, we would push that to the city, and then obviously it'd be best evidence if police or fire or EMS or an official could see that, generate the report, be then able to testify to what they saw and prosecute that in county court. That's a much better case. Not saying that a citizen doesn't have the wherewithal to do that, to give name and address, to provide physical or photographic, video evidence, that we would not prosecute that. But generally speaking, this is designed so that law enforcement or fire, the people that are out with boots on the ground, can see these things and generate the report which initiates the complaint.
Okay.
Chairman, did you have any other questions on that or that?
No, no, I just, thank you. So I guess, and Kate, so is this one of those websites, I mean, you're filling in information, some of the boxes required. If they don't fill it out, then it rejects and says you're missing a box here and there? Are we going to do that? I don't know which ones are most important anyway, but.
Certainly. So the boxes that are required indicate that they are required.
Okay, thank you.
So folks can submit anonymously, however, there's no way for us to track that information.
Correct, okay. Okay, that's very nice. Any questions or comments? Okay. I don't see any, Kate, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item. Okay, does anybody have any other? Commissioner Howell?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly reading the health order. I just have one other question, I think, as relevant to the public before we dismiss.
Okay.
I'm thinking about the youth sports. We received quite a bit of mail, email about that. Is that limited to 25 persons in that space, based on the way this is written, total, in
Commissioner Howell, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counsel, again. I would, the way the order is worded, I think if you had a playing area, could clearly be defined as a gathering, there's no exception to the 25-person cap. Again, if Mike has any other thoughts on that, but I don't think we've done that. And so, I mean, you run into a situation where, say you had a gathering in a gym, a standalone gym with 25, you know, basketball game, that limits your ability to have people there pretty closely. But, you know, you'd have, you'll have two spectators per participant up to a cap, but there's no exception in there that says you can have more than 25.
I understand. So they have 150,000 square foot buildings, just say, you have three people playing three people, I guess a small game of soccer, something, and each person has a couple of parents with them. Basically, well, I guess it'd be more than three people. Let's say four, four and four, that'd be eight. You'd basically be touching that 25-person limit pretty easily. So I don't see how that's practical. If we're going to allow youth sports, especially with a couple of spectators with that player, I don't see how that 25-person limit can possibly apply in that situation. I mean, I want that, if either it's going to be usable policy or we're having a problem
Well, I would agree that, especially you have an operation where you have five basketball courts separated by nets and separation anyway. Would that fall into separation of, you know, there's a spot in there about separation of rooms, creates a new separation of this and that. If you have two basketball teams of eight each.
And I think that's a good, a good point. I think if you had a situation that you described where you had different courts and different, you know, separate, I think you could call those distinct spaces, if there's some sort of separation measure between them, such as that. But I think you're right, your point is well taken, that, you know, basketball teams often have 10 or 12 players on a team, so you could run into issues. I mean, I know I saw a friend of mine whose kid was in a basketball tournament where they only had five players on each team who would play the whole time. I'm not saying that has to be done under this order, but I think places have come up with creative ways to not have their stands be full of parents and other people attending and being in compliance with this order. I think there are ways that can be done with most sports. There's other sports where that would be much more of a challenge, I would think, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need some clarification on this specifically, and I don't think it's re, and again, you're talking about separate courts in a large building, large spaces, but maybe there's separate courts, but there's not a physical barrier between those courts. It's just maybe a curtain or a net, maybe just even a line on the floor. You know, maybe it's not.
Six-foot, six-foot distance.
Yeah. I mean, well, the way this is written right now, it sounds like the entire space that is essentially, you don't have to walk through a doorway, that space would be limited to 25 people. I don't think that's, that's not practical, I don't think. So I think we need to have an adjustment there. I would go a little bit further and say, I don't think that the, I know that we saw a previous version of this order before it came out, and there was a comment about 25 person, sorry, 25 person, excuse me, 25%. I'll wait a minute.
Sorry, Jim. Sorry about that. Commissioner Dennis was asking a question about, why don't you ask the question?
Okay, I have a follow-up question after he's done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
When there are, item 4C, it says, "Fitness centers, health clubs do not fit within the definition of mass gatherings." Wouldn't a gymnasium be a fitness center where they could play basketball and it'd be limited to 25% of the capacity?
It says 100 individuals or 50% of the capacity permitted under the applicable fire code, whichever is less.
I think, Commissioner Dennis, if you're in a facility that fit into that, I think you could, you could have it fit into that categorization. It'd still have to be social distancing and masking, so I think that's a good point. But I think the intent on the fitness centers and health clubs, not saying that they don't sometimes host tournaments and sporting events, because certainly they do, was more towards your places people go to work out, not necessarily recreational sports, but I think it could apply in that situation as well. So I don't think there was any intent, and I apologize for not thinking that through when the question came up earlier, but I think that would be an exception that could, could apply in some of those situations. They would still need to social distance, of course, and things.
Let me, let me continue my question again.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Howell. Sorry, all the gosh for the interruption.
I would just tell you, I would still welcome clarifications. I don't think that's a normal use of that definition, so I think we ought to, we ought to be a little clearer. Personally, I mean, we could probably get there maybe with that, that idea, but I would rather see it clearer than that. I would just say, the earlier version of this order came out that it showed a 25% limitation for gyms. And I don't know how it got switched to this, but I would say for those really, really large facilities, the 100,000 square foot facility, for example, that maybe on a normal day would have hundreds and hundreds of people there together, I think that this definition of 100 people or 50%, whichever is less, is a little more restrictive. I'm not quite sure why that is. I'll just say, as a premise to my comment, yes, everyone needs to socially distance, and that's required by this health order. Everyone needs to wear a mask, it's required by this health order. But if you limit the, limit the occupancy in that way also, you have almost a triple defense, if you will. I think for these very large facilities that are used to having 500 people in there at one time, maybe their occupancy, where the fire code is 1,000 people, for example, to limit them down to this 100 people, maybe, I guess to me, it just seems a little bit arbitrary. I think the occupancy calculation is really a great way to do this. Having to pick 100 people, regardless of the size of the facility, in my opinion, doesn't make as much sense. So that's just a comment, I guess. I would rather see us, I guess, maybe rethink that a little bit. I'm probably, I'm not going to make a motion to change anything, obviously, but. And then last thing I'll say is, the idea of restaurants closing 11 o'clock to 5:00 AM, someone at our last meeting, at our last meeting, I believe, made the point that there's a lot of shift workers, for example, that like to get food in the middle of the night. Seems like if your busiest time of the day is 6:00 to 8:00 PM, I don't know why we're worried about 3:00 AM, because if you're trying to mitigate COVID-19, it seems like you're shredding down the business when they are basically going to be at low, low numbers anyway. So I don't quite understand that one either, but I'll just leave it with that. I think we should chew on those ideas, and I'd like to see clarification with respect to the youth sports. Thank you.
Justin, do you think that, Commissioner, or, sorry, do you think that Dr. Menz could look at reclarifying that, that youth sports item? I think there was a general consensus to make a, to make this a reasonable application.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Will the submitted complaints be subject to CORA?
That's a good question, Commissioner Cruz. Just to, I'll go through the long answer, which is that first, if a complaint's submitted, it would be a record, and under the Kansas Open Records Act, the agreement that you approved earlier today contemplates city and county each handling Open Records Act requests that they receive and they have records for. So we, the county would, those would be considered records that we would, under the Kansas Open Records Act. There are a number of exceptions as to what we are required to provide under the Open Records Act requests, one of which is any violation, any complaints about violations of the law. County resolution is a form of local law. There's probably an interpretation that those complaints would not necessarily be subject to a CORA request, but as Tom pointed out earlier during the, I think, the question the chairman asked, you know, if these matters go, are prosecuted in county court and somebody is, is being charged, and they do a discovery request, which is common, where they ask for all the documents that pertain to their case, we, you know, generally would be required to give them all the information. And so we don't usually tell somebody, you know, if it's a notice, a code violation letter, we don't usually tell who the, who the party is that complained about it. That's, I'm not talking just about this resolution, I'm talking really about any violations of county codes. But if it gets to a situation where a discovery comes up and something's being prosecuted, we would probably be required to actually provide that information. So we don't have anything that I'm aware of on the website that says that it's not going to be provided, although there is an exception of the Open Records Act where the county could not provide it. If somebody just asked who complained about it, or can I get a list of all complaints that were made, that could be redacted out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I want to thank you, Justin, and everybody for your work. I understand we're going to have a, be open to the, to the press right, right away after this. Being no other comments, we will stand adjourned.